shall now come to order. Could I have a roll call?
John Eichman.
Steve Caswell.
Michael O'Brien.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
Jason Pereskeven.
And if everyone would join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have two upcoming meeting dates, one on July 17th and one on August 21st. And we have one set of minutes to approve. It looks like everyone was here for April 17th, Jason, I think except for you. Has everybody had a chance to read those minutes?
Yes.
And do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Stay.
Any abstentions? Okay, thank you.
All right. Michelle, we have, it's not really a numbered item on our agenda, but we have a note here just that we've received several documents in regard to the Summit Woods application. Michelle, if I can, so do we, is there any discussion required for this? Or this will just be on a future agenda after our professionals have a chance to review them?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So we've regard, a U.S. Army Corps of Engineers letter, I'm sorry, that was for Montage subdivision and then the SFEIS for the Summit Woods subdivision.
Correct. And the Montage letter is related to Summit Woods because the two projects have potentially have a combined shared sewer infrastructure, so.
Okay.
Have they been distributed? I remember the Summit Woods thing, but did the Montage thing come out?
The letters are.
Okay.
Okay. Do we need to double check that, Mike, or?
No, no, I knew that something had come out. I wanted to make, that it was the same stuff, it wasn't additional materials. Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Then the first item on our agenda is an extension of final approval for Donovan 5 BMAC LLC at Nancy Court.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're back before you relative to seeking an extension for the site plan. And I think everybody was on the board last year when we asked for this extension. And the board was kind enough to grant us a year extension for that. It's effectively a site that has an existing building. And the site plan approval, which is a signed document, plans on installing another building. For years, we've been coming before this board asking for extensions and again, the board's been kind enough to grant those. One of the reasons, one of the large reasons as to why we asked for the extensions is, as we all know, the economy wasn't doing so hot, but things are getting better. That being said, the applicant who's here tonight, who actually his business occupies half, say plus or minus of the existing building, still has 3,000 square foot of leasable space that he's trying to lease out, which is still open. So for this reason, he's still not comfortable relative to moving forward on the construction of this building. That being said, the board has also requested in the past a, an evaluation, I guess, to take a look at previous, over the period of the previous year, is there any, any significant zoning changes that may affect this property, this site plan and so forth. So I did get that out today, emailed it over, and hopefully everybody maybe got it and took a look at it. But long story short, we did take a look at what has been enacted at the town board level relative to the zoning code modifications since the last time of the last extension. And I not only provided those in the letter that we provided, but also went back and kind of recapped some of the other issues and so forth, which we talked about a year ago, because the board had asked us to look at drainage and some other things. So effectively, there was, there was nothing that we saw that specifically affected the site. One was an ethics board amendment, something about a Cold War veterans exemption, some other things. But relative to a zoning issue that would affect this site, we saw nothing that would change the site plan out, as it was approved by this board.
So if you submitted it today, you wouldn't be tweaking the plan because there's no law with the setbacks or anything like that that's changed that would have to alter the plan?
Right, right.
And I'm sorry, Mike, the review period was one year or five? It's been five years since the original group, right?
Yeah.
So was there a four-year review that preceded this, or is it?
We went back to 2013. And we kind of listed those in the letter to the present, which is, I guess there's been one local law in 2018.
So it was a five-year review period. Thank you.
Yes.
Michelle, are there any other state or federal law changes that you know of that would have affected this site? I'm not aware of any, but I just thought I would double check. I know, Mike, you did list out a couple of other things you looked at with regard to drainage and things, so. Okay. Are there any questions or comments from board members?
Nope.
Any questions or comments from our professionals? All right. Do I have a motion to grant a one-year extension to the Donovan 5 BMAC LLC application?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Great, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
See you next year.
Yeah.
Well, that being said, the applicant had asked me to see if we get away with a two-year extension, but I understand, I appreciate the one-year extension. This has been pretty much policy of this board on these particular applications, so.
Right.
I'll take it and run.
What we will typically do though now, and it's, over the last couple of years we've started this, is as you, as you get to a second or third year request for an extension, we are going to ask for that review of any changes to the laws, et cetera. Because you've done that now, you know, we look at this as this application could have been approved today the way it exists right now, so.
Right, okay.
We appreciate that.
All right, thanks, folks.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is the amended final approval for the Hopewell Sports Dome on Route 52.
Can you angle that more towards the camera?
Turn that a little bit so they can pick it up for the.
Yeah, more towards the camera, yeah. On the camera, yeah.
Yep.
Looks like that's fine, okay.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Lapine with the Chaz and Companies, representing the applicant this evening. We were before the board in May to review our last submission. There were a number of comments that were generated from the board. We were asked to revisit our plan set and reissue it to the board. I'd like to go over those comments. We had a punch list that we all discussed.
Okay.
There was, one of the things we talked about was the landscaping plan in our last planning board meeting, that we felt there should be some additional trees added to the front of the parking lot. We also felt that on the western side of the property, there should be a switch from some of the hardwoods to coniferous to provide year-long screening. That's been represented here on our plan. On this side over here is where we have this additional landscaping, and we've added additional trees throughout the front parking. We updated the table. There was also a desire, the town wanted a note because of the size of the structure, they wanted to be able to revisit the landscaping once everything has been in place one year following its issuance of the CO for the dome. And no building permits will be issued for Phase Two. Until such time, additional landscaping is installed as requested.
If needed, right.
We added that note onto Sheet 12 as requested by the planning board as well.
Okay.
There was, on our signage plan on Sheet 18, we were asked to incorporate some additional signage to route potential clients to either the overflow parking lot on the east side or to the west side. That's been reflected on Sheet 18. We also added some additional signage at the entryways as well. That's reflected on our Sheet 18.
Okay.
There was a concern, we talked about safe distance from the dome during precipitation, snowfall events, and that we put adequate signage on the building. That's been denoted on Sheet 18 as well on all their locations, and a sample of that signage has been provided. There was also a request for a key map to be placed at certain locations. For instance, when you're coming to the stairway at the overflow parking area, so that they know which fields are particularly going to, or where the dome is and where they are versus where they're going. We identified those three locations on Sheet 18 as well, and we provided a sample of what that signage would look like.
Okay.
There was a request for the monument sign that was reflected on the rendering that was presented to you at the last meeting in May, to be transferred onto the site detail sheet, so you have a representation of the materials and the size of that. That was brought onto our detail sheet, and those locations were also identified on the plan set as well.
Okay.
There was a request for temporary barriers and signage to prevent visitors from walking in the rear of the dome. Those details have been added to Sheet 18 as well as additional signage, Sign 13 on Sheet 18 prohibiting visitors from walking in the back of the dome unless obviously there's an emergency and they're coming out the back.
Is that, is that permanent signs or just for events?
They're permanent signs that are attached to the.
Okay.
There was a good catch that we should have lighting in the rear of the dome in event of an emergency, and we added the additional light poles and fixtures on our plans. And we provided the photometrics associated for that as well. We were asked to confirm if we have enough ADA parking for the total site, which included the overflow, which we did. Of the 812 spaces, 17 are required to be ADA, 18 are provided on the site. They're dispersed throughout. There was a request for a traffic management plan for events that go up to 500 cars and cars beyond 500 to 1,000. We provided a new sheet, Sheet 26, that sheet identifies as requested the location where tenant, where employees will be located on the property directing traffic. Their hours prior to and after an event, how long they'll be there. We've also identified the parking lots that'll be occupied for those two scenarios between 0 and 500 and 500 to 1,000. Pretty much anything from 0 to 500 will use the front parking lot, the parking lot on the western side of the dome, and the parking lot in the southwest. Anything beyond 500 will then encroach on the additional 190-plus spaces they have here on the east side of the site.
Okay. And these are, these are the traffic plans for events that you can hold immediately? Anything over 1,000, you would have to come to the town, you'll apply for a permit for a specific event?
Correct.
And you'd have to provide a similar type of traffic plan at that time as well?
Yes, and we have to provide you, I believe they're also required to show you where there'll be off-site parking as well, and what means of transportation will be provided for that.
Right, and there may be other permit requirements at the time for any particular event, again, depending what you're requesting. Okay.
There, one of the questions, it's not necessarily a note on the plan, but it was a request if the applicant was successful at opening the facility in early 2019, when do you think they would come before the town for that request for an event over 1,000 people? Their, their initial thought is maybe late 2019. They may come for an event that may occur late 2019 or 2020.
Okay.
For the onsite pedestrian signal, we were asked to provide that specific manufacturer that we provided you to cut Sheet 4 on the plan set or an approved equal. So that note's been added to Sheet 4.
Okay.
Regarding the illumination along the Route 52 corridor, we had spoken about possibly leasing fixtures, Cobra head fixtures from Central Hudson. And we, whether or not that's something that the board would consider at the May 15th meeting, that is something that they were successful at discussing with Central Hudson, and we found specific fixtures which allowed the illumination of that sidewalk along the corridor without being of any hindrance to the Route 52 right away. They've provided a copy of the letter from Central Hudson acknowledging that they'd be willing to enter into a lease. It would be the responsibility of the Sports Dome for paying the lease for the lights and also the power for those lights.
Okay. And is that specifically along Route 52, or will that be in other locations as well?
It's specifically along the sidewalk along the frontage of their entire property.
Okay.
You did have one request if that could be tied into the lighting for the dome. They indicated it would be tied into their lighting along their 52 corridor.
Okay.
They couldn't make a modification to that.
Okay.
Chris, just real quick, does DOT have to sign off on that lighting, or have they already?
So, one of the things I was going to touch on with that is, as part of the lighting district, there has to be an acknowledgement from the town to the DOT that this is something that's acceptable, so that the DOT would be willing to sign off on this, and the DOT would enter into an agreement with the Sports Dome as to the maintenance of these lights.
DOT is okay with the photometrics?
DOT, well, the photometrics has to be submitted to the DOT. They haven't commented on them, but we're, we're not, we're not really having an impact on the.
So, but hypothetically, if there's an issue with DOT, we have to come back and revisit the lighting?
We'd have to come back and revisit the lighting, but let's, the DOT, this was actually their recommendation to go forward with the overhead fixtures here, specifically the Cobras on the utility poles.
Okay. Michelle, I think the completion of that, those agreements and ensuring that that plan is in place for the lighting of the sidewalk, we just need to add as a condition.
Yeah, it's kind of like the applicant can enter into an agreement with Central Hudson once the board finds it acceptable, and then he can take that agreement and then give it to DOT. It's.
Okay.
It's catch 22. There's a couple of approvals before they can actually sign a lease.
If we have it in our resolution though, saying that we're expecting that, I think that gives you what you need to take it forward.
They can go sign the agreement with Central Hudson.
Okay.
There was a question about the entrance doors in the front of the building. We submitted a plan that delineated those specific doors. They're going to consist of four revolving doors and two airlock doors for ADA accessibility in the event that somebody needs to bring in a stretcher.
And I apologize, I'm sorry, I didn't catch where you said those are being installed.
Along the front of the building, there was a request to describe the eight doors that are being provided in the elevations that you had saw. We also gave you some more detail on those doors. Those eight doors consist of four revolving doors, two emergency doors for ADA accessibility in the event that they needed to bring in a stretcher, and then they require an additional two doors in the event of an emergency where they have to evacuate the building.
Okay.
There was a question for events less than 1,000 individuals, will all visitors enter the front of the building? That is yes. There is no entry from the rear or to the sides.
Okay.
We identified a 20-foot wide easement within the area to be dedicated to the town, which is a conservation easement. It's already been filed. But we identified the sidewalk and lighting easement. We agreed, we talked about 20-foot last month when we were here, about something that would be adequate.
Okay, that's from, through the center of the property, to kind of link the pedestrian sidewalk on Route 52 back into the dome parking lot?
Correct.
And, and I'm sorry, do we, what other approvals are needed?
So that was my next comment here, was.
I'm just a straight man.
That was conditioned upon a review of the town as to whether or not that was acceptable.
Okay.
But I think another part of that equation is, right now, that sidewalk just kind of dumps into the parking lot, and you were going to look to see whether you could get designated pathway.
Yeah, we showed a designated pathway on our plans.
You do have that now?
We have that shown on our plans, but what Dave didn't inform me, we neglected to put the crosswalk on our plans, so we'll add that. But we have the pathway that goes up.
And that's what, in an island?
Yes.
Between the parking spaces, okay.
So we'll, we'll update the plan to add that crosswalk that we overlooked. We, with regards to the water plans, we acknowledge we're going to update the water plans as we discussed. We're going to run a 10-inch line up the road, and then we're going to connect and run into our site. We're going to do all that once we have Department of Health approval for the plan that they've been reviewing. The plans are submitted earlier this, last week for signature. We've been informed that we should be getting signature on our plans either tomorrow or Thursday. We'll have.
Is that the original concept?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll have Department of Health approval. And then we'll be able to go and modify that to what you was requesting.
Sorry, Chris, I had to go back to the crosswalk, the crosswalk across the driveway?
Yes.
Is that illuminated? I would imagine it is, right?
Yeah, there's lighting at that, at that location. We were asked to provide a separate plan, which we added a new plan, Sheet 25. You wanted to have an idea of what will be built as part of Phase One, what will be built as part of Phase Two. That plan was provided, and there's notes indicating where a construction fence will have to be erected at the conclusion of Phase One to protect certain areas where materials are being stockpiled in Phase Two. We also included on that plan, Scott had requested about stabilization of all the areas where the future outdoor fields, 1 through 4, will be located. That's been identified as well on the plans. We also expanded upon Sheet 25 without creating another sheet to discuss the construction phasing and where the fencing will be constructed to allow the circulation of pedestrians and vehicles during a course of construction that was requested. So that was also added to new Sheet 25.
And is that chain link fencing?
Yes.
Not, okay.
The town engineer had some other comments which we addressed. They were very minor in nature regarding some guide rails and some bollards, and we confirmed that there were some details on the plan that they were asking for, but I think we've addressed their comments as well.
On the current plan set?
Yes, on the current plan set.
Anything else?
That was it from the punch list, unless I forgot something that we spoke about on our last meeting.
What was a note on Sheet 12 having to do with the landscaping during Phase Two?
So there was a request because of the size of the dome and the landscaping proposed right now, that they would like it to sit out there for a year and then get a feel for whether or not additional landscaping is needed to satisfy Phase One. And that the applicant's required that whatever is being requested of them in terms of additional landscaping, they have to install, or they will not get a permit to install the outdoor fields or the concession stands that go along with that.
Okay, that's what I thought it was. Is that anyplace else other than Sheet 12? I mean, should that be part of the resolution, or?
It should, it'll be part of the resolution.
Okay, because it's not in the resolution now, so I'm just. I don't want that to get missed when Phase Two starts.
I agree. We're going to go back through these in a, in a minute.
All right.
We're just looking at a condition right now to see if we have to change something.
For the 12-month review after issuance of the CO.
That was a note 25 on the resolution? If that, if that's the same note.
Sorry, I was reading through it quickly. I didn't see it.
I, I think that's the same note.
It is.
It probably is.
Okay.
That covers it.
Other questions?
When is Phase Two going to start after Phase One has been completed? Three years?
Approximately three years.
Michelle, have you had a, sorry, go ahead.
I mean, do they have to complete Phase Two?
It was on the approved site plan.
I mean, they're saying three years, but could it be 10 years, 12 years, or we could see stockpiles sitting there?
I think the dome stands alone on its own regardless of whether they do the outdoor fields or not, so.
I understand, but are we going to be looking at, you know, stockpiles?
Question is, you want to set a sunset that if they don't complete it in three years, that you want them to come back and?
Clean everything up or something?
Take a second look at it.
Maybe at least remove the soil, right?
Yeah.
That's a good idea. At least remove the soil.
If I recall, and I haven't read through your resolution completely, but you did ask that any work prior to Phase One, they come before the board to give you a refresher or an idea as to where they are.
Yeah.
Prior to Phase Two, you mean?
Prior to Phase Two, they had to come before you before they can submit a building permit.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know if that made it into the resolution, but that was one of the, because you wanted to have an update if they're making any amendments to their project.
Tom, so within the resolution, do we require a note to be placed on the plan that says, we can figure out timing, but if Phase Two is not started within X number of months, then the soil removal at the site must be completed or something to that effect?
Yeah.
That's, that's fair.
Yeah. Michelle, have you had a chance, I know Chris just went through several of the changes that he made with regard to the landscaping plan and some of the signage. Have you had a chance to review all of that? Is there anything we need to condition for in the resolution, or you?
No, I went through, I went through the lighting plan, and I went through the landscaping plan as well, and also the handicapped spaces, I checked that. And the freestanding sign. I will note that originally, I think they only had the freestanding sign in two locations. So what they have done now is put the freestanding sign on two on either side of the entrances, on both entrances. So they added two, basically.
Correct.
And it's, it's essentially a concrete monument sign with their logo on it. And that will, and it's not going to be internally lit. It's going to be lit from, you know, kind of uplit, I guess.
Okay. Okay. And how about the, the ADA parking? It looks like the park.
So the ADA parking meets the requirements. When you have between 501 and 1,000 parking spaces, which they have 812, you're required to provide 2% of the parking spaces in ADA compliance. And what they did was, they based their ADA compliance off of their, the number of parking spaces that are required for their site plan, and also for the overflow parking.
Okay. And that's the 18?
That's 18. Well, it's 17, but they provided 18.
Okay. All right. And then, Dave, have you had a chance to look at the traffic management plan?
Yeah.
That's now provided. Any concerns, any questions?
No, not really. We may, we may have to, you know, the sign, all the signs are there, but it's just the location, and that'll come, as they progress.
It did have one comment about the caution sign. They did include, we had talked about placing signs at set distances around the dome in case there was snow falling down. And the sign, I think currently reads something like caution, you know, don't walk near the dome.
Yeah, we got it within 15 feet.
Yeah, we may want to, get every 50 feet, because I think it was, it was every, I thought it was every 100 feet, yeah.
Correct.
So I think we need to make it a little bit closer, but also I thought we should put the word "snow" because I'm not sure people will realize things can fall from above by just the caution, because it doesn't say anything. It just says to stay away from the dome, but isn't. So we may want to.
Okay, we can add, I thought, I thought we might have mentioned precipitation, but we can specify the snow, and we'll make them every 50 feet.
Okay. I'm assuming the eight doors and the detail, four revolving doors, two ADA I'm assuming the eight doors and the detail for revolving doors to ADA compliant access and two emergency doors is sufficient? Do we need to do any, is there any other questions?
It would have been part of the structural review, of the structure itself as part of the building permit.
Okay. But as far as the number of, I don't know that there's any rating on that for...
The whole egress got reviewed by the structural review.
Okay. All right.
And the aggregate crossing, we're all set with that?
That's Phase Two, right, Chris?
Yes.
If I understand?
Correct.
Because the fields are Phase Two, so...
But all the conduit has to be put in now.
And there, but it's shown on the plan now as it's going, as it's intended to be built.
As it's intended to, and the specific model and everything.
The crossing that's going to take the folks from the sidewalk to the front of the dome, that's the sidewalk that's going across the easement, is that going to be the same as that crosswalk that you showed the detail for, of the crosswalk going to the fields?
No, what Dave was referring to is that we didn't have the painted crosswalk on our plan.
That road's not going to be dedicated to the town, that's just an internal service road, the road that we want, but the mechanicalized crosswalk is, or illuminated crosswalk is going to be dedicated to the town someday, so...
And then I think where you're showing that sidewalk coming in and the crosswalk across the internal road, the traffic island, the parking island, is that wider to have a sidewalk through it so the pedestrians just continue walking between the cars, or is it...
It's five feet wide, and then you've got a six-inch curb on either side, so if you have an overhang of a foot to foot and a half, you'll end up with a minimum of three feet.
Okay, so the intention is that pedestrians aren't walking down the driveways, they'll be walking in that parking kind of...
Correct, a safe corridor has been dedicated to it.
Okay, okay.
This is a question, I know you're tight for parking, is there any way that can be shifted a little bit instead of the bare minimum five feet with potential overhang? Can we, can you, can you get anything more, or is that, is that it? I mean, you're ADA compliant now, but I'm just saying, just as an entrance.
Not with the overhang, not with the overhang, you won't be ADA compliant.
That is true.
You need to have the number 36 inch wide.
The 36 doesn't get you through the ADA compliant though, does it?
We're talking about the four...
Talking about the main, right, for the pedestrian entrance to your building.
Well, this is a pedestrian entrance for Route 52.
Right.
Main pedestrian entrance to the front of the building, so that it becomes a school entrance.
Is there an ADA compliant route that goes to the traffic light at Rothel from the front of the dome?
This, this is...
But in addition to that, in addition to that, is there a sidewalk that goes straight to Rothel?
No, they have to walk along the Route 52 corridor, so...
All right, so that leaves you with that, it's got to be ADA compliant then.
But three feet of width is the minimum width that you need.
Four.
I thought it was four.
Oh, we'll check that, that's not my understanding, but we'll check that.
I thought it was minimum four, five is, is the, you know, recommended, but as a...
Five is that you're doing your requirements during that time.
Okay, my point is, as you're...
36 inches of unobstructed width.
I understand. My main point is, if this is going to be your pedestrian access from Route 52, I'm just asking if it can be widened to accommodate, you know, the anticipated pedestrian traffic.
What we might be able to do is the island on either side of it.
Go ahead.
I don't know if it's easy if I bring it up on the computer.
No, it's okay.
The island on either side is five feet wide between curbs.
Right.
So if we take a foot out of that and a foot out of the other one, you end up with a four-foot wide island, but then you can make that center island, instead of five feet wide, you make it seven feet wide.
I would prefer that because that gives us at least the minimum, even if you have overhang from parked cars, you should have at least a minimum for ADA access.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Step to the parking spaces is 18 feet?
I think they were, I think they were 20 feet, is what Mr. Trinkus had.
How many are 18 feet?
18. They can't cheat that, really.
No, I think if...
I should go compact, I mean, you know.
And I think for this type of a use, you're...
You're going to make that cars.
People are bringing a lot of equipment.
Yeah.
But, no, I think if, Dave suggested, I think if we could take a foot off of each island, then we can make that, that one seven foot wide, and then cheat on the other ones at four.
I'm sorry, I'm just making notes so that we can... Dave, anything else from you with regard to traffic or site circulation?
The bulk of the traffic, off-site improvements are covered on the highway work permit with the DOT, I believe that is included as a condition for the CO.
Okay.
That the highway work permit process be satisfied, including the reactivation of the signal at Road 0. Correct?
Correct.
That's what I understand.
Go to 24.
So, as far as, yeah.
Okay. Michelle, anything else from you that we need to discuss? Okay. Scott, do you have any, anything else we need to go over?
Maybe as we go through the resolution, as we go through the resolution, if we're going to do that.
Okay. Tom, anything else?
No, I would note that some of the agreements referenced have already been taken care of, but we'd like to leave the condition just to close out any loose ends.
That's fine.
But we've worked well together, and everything seems to be coming into place.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members? Would someone like to offer the reservation?
This is already under code for temporary travel.
Okay.
Before I do, oh, Lord. To be it further resolved, score...
Two conditions, sir. Two conditions.
What's the dollar?
You can go to dinner at number 10.
Be determined by the highway superintendent.
Anything else for that?
We have other ones we're going to add as we go.
Okay, good.
I'll let you get through the first one.
All right, here we go. Final draft, amended site plan approval, special permit, fill permit, MS4 approval. Site plan, King Dome Hopewell Sports Dome Ventures LLC, subdivision is King Dome Park of a filed map number. The applicant is Hopewell Sports Dome Ventures LLC and Brightland Solar LLC. Location at 2 Auditorium Drive and New York State Route 52, the former West Complex. Resolution offered by Planning Board member John Cutler, whereas the applicant has applied for a two-lot subdivision, and site plan approval for a dome structure in accordance with Article 9 of the zoning law, and whereas the town board was declared lead agency in June of 2014, and on September 25th, 2014, adopted a neg- negative declaration, the terms and conditions of which are incorporated by reference herein, and whereas this board conducted many discussions about the project and held formal public hearings on August 19th, September 16th, and October 7th. And whereas the planning board granted both preliminary and final subdivision approval on October 21st, 2014, for the subdivision shown on a map entitled Subdivision for King Dome dated January 14th, 2014, revised through September 15th, 2014 by Chasin Engineering. And whereas the applicant has submitted an amended site plan, and the board determined that the submission is in substantial agreement with prior submissions, and incorporates various comments and changes so that no further public hearings are required, and further finds the application meets the town's requirements for site, final site plan approval, subject to the final conditions set forth below. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby issues amended site plan approval for the above project as represented on a map entitled King Dome Hopewell Sports Ventures LLC dated May 27, 2014, revised through May 31st of 2018 by Stephen Trinkows, P.E., and be further resolved that a special permit pursuant to Article 9 of the zoning code for a large-scale indoor/outdoor recreation facility is grant, is granted subject to the conditions hereof. Be it further resolved that in accordance with 194.75 of the town code, an evacuation, evac, I can't even say that word, evacuation permit is granted for filling as shown in the approximate amount of 7,100 cubic yards, and be it further resolved that the amended storm air pollution prevention plan dated June 12th, 2018, submitted herein, is accepted and conditionally approved. And be it further resolved that all site inspection and building fees in the amount as calculated by the town engineer are due upon signing of this site plan or building permit as required before any work commences. And be it further resolved that the following conditions will be complied with before the maps are signed unless otherwise noted herein. Number one, all comments in the following consultant letters will be satisfied, A, by Morris Associates dated May 8th in 2018. Number two, formation of water and sewer districts on Route 52 by the town board, and incorporate water and sewer easements for public water and sewer lines as required subject to the approval and satisfaction of the town engineer and the town attorney. Stormwater area on Route 52 to be dedicated to the town for inclusion in stormwater maintenance district to be formed by the town board, with reservations limited rights for the applicant, Hopewell Sports Dome Ventures LLC, to landscape and maintain the plantings and for certain snow disposal purposes. Agreements and easements are subject to the approval of the town attorney. Reciprocal easement over South Drive for both the front and rear parcel, owner with the town of East Fishkill being a third-party beneficiary to allow for dedication in the future as a public road. Prior to the dedication, a pedestrian road crossing, subject to the, to the approval of the town engineer, will be installed by applicant, Hopewell Sports Dome Ventures. Either the town, the applicant, or rear parcel owner can trigger the dedication. Number six, stormwater maintenance agreements on onsite stormwater facilities with owners of both front and rear lots. Seven, emergency access at the end of South Drive and Auditorium Drive over rear lot at end of parking easement. Written approvals of Duchess County Department of Health for filing of subdivision map and signing of site plan. Nine, the application agrees to explore prior to work commencing for the location of a 10-inch, 10-foot water line in, 10-inch, right, in the water line in the vicinity of South Drive from Route 52 to the property line, and to consider easement therefore to the town if the same is not within the road of right-of-way. Number 10, removal of snow and ice as part of an operation plan must be reviewed and approved by town engineer and incorporated into the storm, stormwater management plan. 11, SWIP must be received, final approval of the town engineer. 12, the final construction phasing to be approved by the town engineer prior to the issuance of the SWIP acceptance form. An NOI for grading and foundation construction may be issued prior to all conditions being satisfied at the owner's risk after subdivision map is filed at the town engineering's discretion. Number 13, environmental monitor shall be on site as needed at least two times per week. An SRO for monitor shall be established in the amount as calculated by the town engineer. 14, New York State Department of Transportation sign off on intersections. 15, sidewalks as approved by New York State Department of Transportation or as revised by the New York State DOT and the town. Number 16, Hopewell Sports Dome Ventures LLC shall enter into a sidewalk and lighting maintenance agreement with the town with respect to all sidewalks within public rows. 17, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the owner shall enter into an agreement with the town in a form acceptable to the town attorney that will provide for community benefits from the construction and operation of the dome. Said usage shall include but not be limited to free use by senior citizens of indoor tract during business hours at no charge. The allocation of one turf field for use by town, school, recreation department from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday. Town residents will be provided with an exclusive pre-booking window for all events held at the facility at least one week prior to the general public. All town residents will receive a 10% discount on any costs or fees for the use of the facility or participation in events. All of these rights shall, shall, of course, be subject to certain exclusions, example, certain special events or holidays during the school year. In consideration of this, the $6,000 recreation fee is waived. 18, all signage on the site with the exception of traffic directional signs on the site interior are subject to compliance with the town sign law and further approval. 19, the application shall undertake the reactivation of the traffic signal at Rothel Drive to the satisfaction of the Department of Transportation prior to the issuance of a CO. This and any work within the state, ROW, shall be subject to the current New York State DOT permitting process. 20, application, I'm sorry, applicant shall pay their fair share of a corridor study along Route 52 in the sum of $9,000 or $9 million?
$9,000.
$9,000, okay, there's a lot, there's a lot of, there's a lot of zeros there.
Compromise, 900.
Looked like $9 million to me.
Compromise, $9,000.
If the study is not done within two years following the final C of O, this condition expires. This obligation will be appropriately guaranteed. 21, due to the unique nature of the structure, certain construction techniques will be utilized on the site that may differ from those regularly exercised, experienced. The batching and mixing of concrete on the site for a more continual pour, heating elements, et cetera, are some examples. This may be allowed by the building department. 22, construction trailers will be located on the site but must be removed prior to issuance of a C of O, but may remain up to 90 days thereafter if the cost removal is bonded. 23, hours of operation shall be as stated on the approved plans. However, in any case, the use of the outside fields shall cease by 11:00 p.m. and all sports field lighting turned off within an appropriate time thereafter. 24, the applicant shall provide a bond to restore the roadway to condition acceptable to the highway superintendent and the town engineer. South Drive at a time of dedication. This condition applies to the portion of South Drive owned by Hopewell Sports Dome Ventures LLC. 25, within 12 months of the opening of the Hopewell Sports Dome, the town reserves the right to review the landscape plan, lighting plan, and internal circulation, wayfinding signs and traffic circulation plan to determine if any improvements or modifications to the plan are necessary. Any dispute, 26, any disputes between the applicant and consultants will be resolved by this board. 27, final site sign off by the building department and fire official with respect to operation plan and evacuation plan. 28, any changes to the base of the, of the dome must be reviewed by the Architectural Review Board. 29, applicant must comply with all other rules and regulations of the town, an example of nor... of noise, noise ordinance, et cetera. 30, outdoor fields on the west side of the property will have a 15-foot fence with a 6-foot windscreen above which a 15-foot net will be constructed for a total of 30 feet. Within two years of the start of the use, the performance of the barrier will be monitored and adjusted if deemed necessary. 31, the name on the map will be updated to remove King Dome. 32, for the South Drive dedication, in areas where the 50-foot dedication cannot be met, the road width shall be two feet beyond the curb or the edge of the pavement. In this areas, an easement providing sufficient area for the town to maintain the road will be granted. 33, the applicant shall provide a letter to the planning board describing how traffic will be managed for special events that require the use of the overflow parking areas, but do not trigger the need for a public assembly permit whereas such, such assembly exceeds 1,000 persons. 33, sign community betterment agreement prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. 34, loading related to the eternal structures.
You have 35?
Let's pause there. Michelle, how did you want to phrase 34? I think this was just making sure we have a loading zone identified because you do have retail space within the dome itself.
Oh, okay.
Unloading zone, basically.
Unloading.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's something new, Chris, that we didn't.
Yeah, I can.
freely talk about.
I just want to show that on the side.
Where your delivery is going to be that it don't inflict conflict.
So we, do, do we just want to say designation on the plan of a specified loading zone for the?
As approved by the planner and traffic consultant.
As approved by?
Planner and a traffic consultant.
Planner and traffic consultant.
All right, so 34 will be designated loading zone to, to be placed on plan after agreement by the traffic, traffic engineer and town planner.
Before we go any further, I just have two, two small additions. One to condition number five.
Okay, hold, hold on one second, Michelle, I'm sorry, let's. Did, do you want to finish going through the first set of conditions before we go backwards?
Yeah, let's just finish. Because that was incomplete, that's why we had to stop there.
Right, right.
We'll keep going, and then come back.
So then we also said we were going to add condition 35, which is completion of the lighting, is it going to be a lighting agreement, lighting lease with Central Hudson and the Department of Transportation?
It's a lease with Central Hudson.
Lease with Central Hudson and agreement?
With the state DOT.
By New York State DOT for the Route 52 sidewalk along the south side of Route 52? And then I have 36, a crosswalk is required on, to be placed on, sorry, to be placed on the plan for the internal road?
Yes.
Yeah, update plan to add crosswalk at the sidewalk, the pedestrian sidewalk that goes through the easement. Because we have to, we have to show it on the plan, actually.
Okay, so the sidewalk isn't shown? I thought the sidewalk was shown.
Sidewalk is shown on the plan right now.
The crosswalk is not.
So I'm saying a crosswalk is required to be placed on the plan on the internal road to bring pedestrians from the Route 52 sidewalk connection to the building. The parking island
16.
Across from this, from the sidewalk connection will be widened to at least seven feet with six-inch curbs on either side for a total of eight feet to facilitate this pedestrian access. A one-foot reduction on each island to the right and left may be required. Are we okay with that? Is that?
The mayor is, will.
I can say will be required, that's fine. No, but you, but I think you have the space for it, so.
Yeah, we have the space.
It makes sense to guide your pedestrians.
Absolutely agree.
Up on the sidewalk, okay. And then I think we need a, condition 37 is a note on the plan. If Phase Two is not started within three years of the, you said three years, right?
Phase Two is, you have to remove the stockpile within three years.
Oh, you said with?
They have to come before you prior to issuing a building permit to give you, there's two things there, one is they have to remove their stockpiles within three years, but you also want them to come before you before they submit a building permit.
Great, but that's already on your plan, right?
I, I don't think I have that note, I'll have to add that note, I don't, I'm being honest, I don't, I didn't put that on the plan, so.
Okay.
Probably add that as a resolution.
All right, so we'll add that as another, so we'll, a note, we'll place a note on the plan stating, if Phase Two is not started within three years of the completion of Phase One issuance of a CO, then the site must be restored by removing the soil piles and all construction fencing, et cetera. A review of landscaping and lighting will also be required for the restored areas at that time. Michelle, or Scott, did that sound correct?
But is there a trip back to the planning board at that stage in three years?
I'll, I'll add that, I'm going to add that now, yeah, I didn't have that initially. Okay. Uh, within three years. I think we'll, let's leave this as is and we'll put a separate condition, a 38, that says, um, before beginning Phase Two or within three years of the issuance of a certificate, certificate of occupancy for the dome. I'm sorry, I have, I'm writing as I'm talking here, beginning Phase Two within three years of issuance of the CO, applicant will return to the planning board to confirm, uh, either start of Phase Two or restoration of the construction areas.
And any amendments to Phase Two?
Right. Scott, are you comfortable with the three years?
Yes.
Okay. Any amendments to the plan? Or restoration of the site? Jason, I know you had had this as a concern, does this address the concern? Is there anything else?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So this will also, 38 will also need to be a note on your, in your plan set?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Michelle, was there anything else we needed to add before we go back?
The sign every 50 feet. The snow signs every 50 feet, because I think right now they're every 100 feet.
We have them every 100 feet on the plan right now.
39, the snow, is it snow caution or precipitation caution?
It just says cautions, um, like, do not walk close to the dome or something like that, so it just, it.
The snow caution sign needs to be, uh, placed every 50 feet on the, uh, on the dome.
Okay. All right, we'll add that as 39. Anything else? Anything else from board members, Scott?
Well, before we go back, just a quick question, Chris, the plan that's submitted to the health department, which you're going to get approval on, that, if I'm correct, it shows the replacement of that 10-inch pipe long, South Drive, right?
The current plan does not show the replacement of that, it, what it identifies is a potential location for a future town water line.
Doesn't show that line then?
No, this is, that 10-inch line, uh, is going to be shown with the revised water line.
We have nothing in here that guarantees that, so we may have to add that then as a condition.
Yeah, you can.
Which would be number, what, 30?
40.
39 or 40?
40.
Or if, if you want to expand upon comment number nine, or eliminate comment number nine and replace it with, the applicant has agreed to install a 10-inch water line along South Drive from Route 52 to the property line.
That's fine.
So applicant agrees to install?
A 10-inch water line?
Yep.
In the vicinity of South Drive from Route 52 to the property line?
So it's just the same wording?
Yep.
And basically that replaces the one that was in conflict with a detention basin?
Okay.
It's a replacement line.
So I've struck the words explorer prior to say we're commencing for the location of, and instead just say applicant agrees to install a 10-inch water line in the vicinity?
Replacement line.
10-inch water replacement line?
No, it replaces the one that was in conflict with the detention basin, so we just want to be clear, it's not like it's a brand-new line, it's replacing one that was removed during the construction of a water, detention basin.
And we should add that this is to be dedicated to the town of East Fishkill.
Yes.
So this line replaces the original?
Yes.
Sorry, Scott, how did you want to, the original located?
Original 10-inch line that was in conflict with other improvements on the site, you can leave it at that.
Condition of the water line.
You know, I'm not following why you put that last clause on there, because it was in conflict.
Well, it's not like they're just providing a brand-new water line, they're replacing one that they removed, so I just want to be clear on that.
Oh, okay.
Granted, it's going to be a little longer run, but it still replaces one that they removed. Well, that's the way it shook out at the end of the day, yeah.
Are we, are we good with this?
Yeah, we're clear.
Says restated?
Yep.
Okay.
And then obviously, once you get your approval, we're going to look to see how we can utilize that line to help feed the dome and maybe shorten up pipe elsewhere, so.
The, the only other comment, question is, uh, the applicant wasn't, uh, number 24, the applicant shall provide a bond to restore the roadway to condition acceptable to highway superintendent and engineer, South Drive at a time of dedication.
Yeah, we have to agree upon that amount.
Is there a, I guess the question Russell just asked me was, the condition of the road as it is, is there improvements that are going to be asked to be made to that road after it's restored? Is the question Russell just asked me?
I think until you're done with construction, we really don't know what the final condition's going to be, because you have a lot of work left to do.
Correct.
So I would recommend that, uh, if we can agree at this time that when you're done with your site work, um, well, that kind of leaves it open, but I need to really nail down the number now, I get it, but the problem is we don't know whatever the condition is today, it may not be the condition three years from now.
So is the intent construction damage? Is that, is that what we're talking about here, or is it?
It could be construction damage, it could just be the existing condition in general, so, um, I'm going to lean to Tom a little bit on this, as far as what kind of language we can put in until we can make an assessment.
We're going to agree that the amount would be determined by the highway superintendent if there's a dispute, it comes back to the planning board.
And that has to be done prior to the signing? So it's just a short-order thing we have to get done? Prior to the signing of the matter?
Yeah, we can agree on a amount prior to that.
Okay.
Not decide, um, yeah, would have to be done.
Have to be done prior to the signing, so it does be a condition that we'll mutually have to agree on a number.
And if you can't, you'll come back to the planning board.
The owners who will walk, make a best assessment now of what we think it is now, and we'll go from there.
So do we need to change the wording of this?
Well, I think we just, we're going to suggest, uh, in a sum to be determined by the highway superintendent. And then if there's a dispute, the resolution has the general catch-all, that it comes back to the planning board.
I think that's already, I think I already, we already have that as a condition?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so the applicant shall provide a bond in a sum to be?
To be set by the highway superintendent.
Determined by the highway superintendent, okay. And Chris, you understand you can come back here if there's an issue?
Yes.
Okay. To restore the roadway to condition acceptable to the superintendent and the town engineer at time of dedication. Okay. Michelle, you had, you said on condition five?
Yeah, number five, just the, the last sentence, either the town, the applicant, or rear parcel owner can trigger dedication, subject to approval by the town. So we want to add.
Okay.
Did you want to change?
Okay.
Yes, we're going to change that.
Any other changes? You said you had two.
So it's a, on the, be it further resolved in accordance of 194.75 of the Town Code, excavation permit is granted for filling as shown in the approximate amount of 7,100 cubic yards. So that number's been revised, updated, I believe?
Yes.
Rather than for filling, it's going to be for excavation and disposal off-site, so we need to tweak that. And Chris, do you have that amount, that estimated amount?
I think it was 71,000 was the total.
71,000.
Was the total for the project, is what we submitted.
So. So I'm sorry, we, we've been talking about this in a couple meetings, and we said that that was going to be handled outside of this. So this 7,100 was the original excavation.
Right, but it's inaccurate at this point, so either we, we delete the whole thing, but as it stands, that's inaccurate.
Well, I, I'm looking at this, I'm thinking you couldn't, you can delete it because you've already made it a condition that they have to remove it within three years.
You can remove it, yeah.
So.
You can remove that.
We can just remove, we can strike it? Okay. But are they going to need to then apply for?
Yeah, they're going to have to go through a procedure and maybe very well come back to, it depends upon who the permitting authority is at the time they want to do that.
Okay. Is that clear? So right now, what you have is a fill permit.
Plan, number of truckloads a day, routes, that kind of thing?
Yes.
Where it's going.
That's, that's fair.
Yeah, when you, when you determine that, because obviously you haven't determined that yet.
Okay.
That, that's fair.
Okay, so we're going to strike, it's on page two, the third, be it further resolved. Michelle, any other changes?
Russell just asked me one other clarification when he came up here before. The second to last, be further resolved, no work shall commence in the site unless until.
That was struck, it was not.
That was the struck, okay.
You, you already, there was already conditions in your prior resolution that allowed you to begin work, so you struck that condition.
I was just checking the list, he whispered in my ear, I wrote him down, so I just wanted to make sure I had him.
Right. Any other changes? Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, John, you want to go ahead and?
Finish that last paragraph?
Finish that last paragraph for us?
All right, here we go. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I think Mike just slightly edged you out on that one.
Just slightly.
And votes as follows, Michael?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
John Cutler?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And John Eichman?
Aye.
And myself, aye, the motion carries. I know we added a lot, so we'll get a revised copy back to, um.
Thank you very much for your assistance and patience in this project.
Good luck.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is, item through, thank you, a renewal of a peddler's permit, this is Hudson Valley Gyro and Market formerly known as In the Doghouse on Route 82. Should I have said gyro or hero?
Yeah, it could go either way.
I wasn't sure. Hudson Valley?
I was going to say. We're risking pronouncing it, and that's why the person isn't standing up.
Standing up, exactly.
No offense intended?
No intent.
Okay.
Okay, we'll skip over that one, I'll call it one more time before we close the meeting tonight, in case there's. Oh, okay. Were they, were they here, or? Okay, I'm going to, Michelle, what I'm going to do is I'm going to move on, we'll call it one last time before we close the meeting. So the next item on our agenda is a fireworks peddler's permit for Keystone Fireworks at 550 Route 82 or Joe's Dairy Bar.
Hi, I'm Neil Shaw here for Keystone, answer any questions you might have. I noticed there was a question about the location of the tent being too close for the traffic flow. We intend to move the tent 200 feet to the west. We intend to move the tent 200 feet to the west. It'd actually be up against the tree line, so it will-
From the, from the original, an original drawing then that you submitted to us?
I went there yesterday, and I was there again today looking at it, and where was originally-
Do we, do we have the application? I could just take a quick look at it. I'd like to look at the site drawing and just-
You know, this is a very busy site. You know, we looked at it, that, okay, you know, putting another business in there, particularly one that's not actually in the stand itself. I mean, have you guys thought through any changes to ingress, egress, and site circulation to kind of facilitate this?
Well, the original, do you, do you need to have that?
Uh, no. I've driven by the site thousands of times, and it's extremely busy, particularly on, you know, in the evening hours. So, so talk to me about how-
And our busy time's usually during the day. So that, that end of it would, would work out actually pretty good. But the tent being at the west end of it is going to be up against the tree line, and there's a driveway coming in. So it would actually be over there someplace, the tent is away from that. Coming in there, and then up the others over in here would be where a whole bunch of picnic tables are. So traffic can come in, and still a few would park there, but most of them are going to be up on the other side where the bigger parking area is. And actually, they would leave probably by, I sat there today watching them, and most of the people leave where the red light is so that the traffic flow actually lets them out. It looks like a good situation to have the tent at the west end.
So can, can I just ask you to approach, I'm going to have you show me where you're intending to place the tent, if you don't mind, from the overhead.
Really, at the west end?
So this is your roadway, this is-
It was originally supposed to be over here, but that's-
Okay, so what you've submitted to us is where you intend to place it?
I guess in the original end of it was, was supposed to be right here.
Okay.
Right, okay.
I went and actually parked there today and had vanilla ice cream. Watched the cars come in, and most of them would leave this way, and so I, that's what I did to. But that's, that would be where it is.
So Michelle, as this drawing was presented to us with the original permit, is the location of the tent.
I think one of the biggest issues with this particular application is that it's, it is within 200 feet of a major intersection. Signaled, yeah.
But that's where everybody parks.
Right. And it's, it's because of the way that, so, and that is technically something that's supposed to be taken under consideration when you're reviewing an application for a peddler's permit. It's-
I mean, I think there's usually cars in this area.
Yes.
At least when I, when I see it, I don't know, I think-
It can be a little bit of a free-for-all.
The overhead on Google Maps, does it show cars in that area at the time of the pitch?
Well, no, it's, it's empty, so it must have been earlier.
This, this area looks like it was winter time, so.
Exactly.
Okay. So Michelle, your comments for us is that there's currently limited parking on the site? Do they have a formal site plan for this, with formal parking?
I mean, it's kind of, people park on the grass, and people, and there's not, the other issue with the site is that the entrance, there's several points of ingress and egress, so it can kind of become a little crazy. It's not very ordered. And there's no real specified parking spots anywhere. And there's a lot of pedestrians kind of milling around when it's crowded.
Well, most people park on the west side anyways because you have the picnic tables there.
Right. This, this seems like a real tough site to try to put an additional use on a site that's already very heavily used. If you're there during peak hours, it's typically very crowded.
What are the hours of operation for that tent?
Do you have your hours of operation in here usually?
9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
On the, on the application.
That's, that's a nightmare what can happen.
Yeah, June 26th to July 5th, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. July 3rd and 4th, 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM. So I know it's located close to other businesses. Do we know where the, what the distance is?
I don't, because I was-
Were you able to tell that from the overhead?
Um, I was looking at it at the other location, but it's also within that, within 200 feet of the intersection.
The tent itself, or just the site?
The, the tent itself would have been in the other location. I'm not exactly sure where he's putting it now, but-
Right, it's all the way to the other side.
Yeah.
There's a note.
It's more than two, the tent itself is more than 200 feet from the intersection, Michelle. It's just the site itself is not. So I don't know what the-
I don't know that we have an approved site plan.
That's what I was asking.
So I mean, with approved site plan, I don't know how we can really evaluate the parking, because that's really what it comes down to, is parking along with egress.
Well, I know it's anecdotal, but anytime I've gone by it in the evening, it's usually fairly crowded, and there's usually cars where this tent is supposed to be.
Exactly. So I mean, unless they want to update and submit a site plan and do a parking calculation, I don't know what we're reviewing.
Say it again?
I said unless we get an updated site plan that shows a parking calculation, I don't know what we're reviewing. To, you know, to make an educated decision. We all know it's very busy and full as, as it stands now, and you're bringing in another business.
Right.
Is that driveway, the existing driveway, is that under signal control now? And that, does it have a three-color display, red, yellow, green?
There's a signal.
Yeah, but is this driveway under signal control? Does it, does it get a red, red, yellow, green?
That's why today I went and parked there, because people come in there, and there's some cars parked actually right there. With the signals, that really lets them out.
How many cars do you anticipate?
What's that?
How many cars do you anticipate coming in and addition?
Well, what happens at almost every one of our sites, we'll have two or three in an hour in the beginning. We don't really get busy until about the second and third of July, and then a little bit on July 4th, and then it just drops right off. That's why they close on July 5th, but the bulk of it would be the second and third.
David, do you, would you support that, like two or three cars an hour addition? And that would be addition to the existing business?
I really haven't looked at this. My concern is, is the driveway under signal control? And I'm, you know, I'm not, it's not, I don't believe you, it's just that I'm having a hard time thinking that it is under signal control. And if it isn't, then adding any vehicles there, you know, I don't think is a wise-
So would you guys support saying there, no egress from the westernmost entrance there where cars are pulling in?
But the thing is, then what's the alternative, Mike? I mean-
So that they now have to come out at the light? Is that?
That would be the ideal case, but if it's not under signal control, then you're creating hazard basically. You're telling traffic to try and, you know, find a gap to get out.
I think it's tight.
It's chaos.
And that exit is used by the pizza store and the ice cream shop.
There's a road, though, isn't it?
That's a public road. That's why everybody can use it.
Right.
Yeah, that's why I think the signal does go four ways.
Ladies and gentlemen, you, you also realize that you can exercise your common sense. You're all familiar with the site. There's a temporary peddler's permit, a stationary permit, which is kind of an oxymoron when you think of a peddler going door-to-door selling goods and wares. So it's, it's a creation of the code, and I think anyone who lives in a 25-mile area of Joe's Dairy Bar knows it's one of the most popular sites in the Hudson Valley. It's extremely busy. The cars come in starting in mid-afternoon, they're all evening, and then now you're going to take away parking. You're going to put another use there on a temporary basis for a non-permanent use. I think you should give that a little pause and ponder it and a decision on it.
Yeah, and I really don't see another location where you can put it within the same site that would be more out of the way or away. I mean, I even think possibly you're worth with this location of the tent, I just, it doesn't seem like it's going to- It's, it's not going to improve site distances anyway, I'll say that.
And also saying no egress out the westernmost doesn't really give people an opportunity to go around the, I mean, there is no overall site arc really.
All right. Does anyone want to make a motion? Is there anyone in favor?
How long is it going to be there?
It's going to be there from June 26th to July 5th.
Just under two weeks.
I think it's-
No, I know what it looks like.
Yeah, if you want to look at it.
I'm sorry, but I'll, I'll make a motion that we deny the application.
I'll second that.
I have a motion to, let's finish the conversation. So I have a motion to decline. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Craig or John, do you have a?
No, we're in agreement.
We're in agreement.
With a denial of the application?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right.
So the motion is den, the motion is approved, and the peddler's permit is denied, declined? I don't know what the, denied?
Denied.
Denied.
Denied, okay. Thank you, Michael. The next item on our agenda is also a fireworks peddler's permit, Musa Fakori at 136 Clove Branch Road, Clove Branch Wines and Liquors.
Good evening, Vincent Zabo, representing the vendor and Phantom Fireworks. Any questions you have?
I looked at it, is the, the spot where the actual tent would go, is that, is that a residential piece of property, or is that part of the business property?
It's actually part of the business, as I, from what I understood, from the owner, is part of the business itself.
Because I couldn't tell whether it was part of the adjoining house on the other side or not.
No, if you look, it also adjoints the parking lot in the rear, too.
Okay.
Well, we clearly don't have the same kind of traffic or kinds of issues.
And it's a much more guarded parking area as well.
Right.
You still have the issue that it's within 200 feet of an intersection and 250 feet of a commercial establishment. And there is still, again, it's another site that you have sort of no controlled access. See if that's open along the roadway, and people can kind of pull in and pull out along the-
And you'll have a residential use there as well.
We have a comment from the chief of police saying to cone off shoulder of Clove Branch Road adjacent to tent to prevent parking and site distance hazards for cars exiting the parking lot.
We, we've done that in multiple sites. That's not an issue.
Okay, so, so you're pledging to do that?
In, in actually, all our deliveries, there's 22 cones that are delivered with the supplies. That's not really an issue.
So that's a yes?
So that's a yes, right?
You can do that. I'm sorry.
We love to hear those yes, no words. Thank you.
But, but that's not just for delivery, that is, the, the-
No, that's actually, that's actually combed around the tents themselves, and also any additions that we need.
So access will be off of Clove Branch, vehicle access?
Access, if you look at the two, and I can't cut off them, but it's actually from both sides. If anybody needs more.
Can we just, again, it would be more, also coming back from 82, you know, with the cones. So it's really more of a constricted, so people can come, you know, to address the concern about it right on the intersection, right? In other words, in addition to, I think what you're saying is, oh yes, of course, we can do cones along here.
Yeah.
But also to kind of push them back here, so you don't have unfettered-
In other words, to buy the parking lot itself, or?
Just to push them back so that people are not exiting directly into the intersection, right?
Oh, well, there is actually a blockade out there on that corner.
Right, there is some, but I'm-
We can extend that. That's not a problem. Just tell me how many feet we want to extend it.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll defer to the traffic experts.
I would just like to point out that currently, you know, the deli's hours, main hours are probably morning and lunch, which I don't think the liquor store is doing much of a business morning and lunch. So I mean, those two businesses dovetail nicely as far as their, their traffic impact and parking requirements. Now, are you going to take a, a business that's going to basically overlap both of those existing businesses? Certainly on the weekends, there'll be people in there from, you know, early to late. So, you know, how does that affect overall parking and circulation? So you have something right now that so far has worked, because the hours are pretty much offset, and now you're going to bring in another business that is going to overlap both of those. And as the holiday draws near, I'd anticipate, you know, a fair amount of traffic being drawn to it. So I think you should take that in consideration. And the close proximity to the traffic light right there as well.
And again, this is another two week?
Two weeks, 13 days, actually.
So I'd make a motion to grant the permit?
Sorry, just give me one moment. I'm making sure all the insurances. And we do have-
Excuse me, along Clove Branch Road, you said the cones would be placed to prevent people from pulling in, just pulling in?
No, we don't want them pulling in there anyway. Normally, we'll put cones here, here. And usually in a situation like this, we'll also put no parking on the cones themselves, because that's another problem that comes up.
But still, you don't have any enforcement. Some, you know, somebody, the cones are here, somebody can stop here.
You know, you can make a lot of laws, and people will try to do something different. What we can do is try to prevent as much as possible.
I was going to say, and manage it, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So the chief of police also provided us with a memo stating that he has a concern about vehicles parking along the northbound shoulder of Clove Branch Road adjacent to the fireworks tent. Cars may present a site distance limitation for drivers trying to exit the deli parking lot onto Clove Branch.
I mean, you see, you understand the concern.
Yeah, I, I-
What is to prevent somebody that wants to stop at fireworks? They could, you know, natural tendencies, I'm pulling in here.
Well, that, also, this is also above the level as well. I mean, there's very little area you could pull there, and hopefully, somebody wouldn't be silly enough to do that. That would be like pulling off of the shoulder of the road, too. But that's something we all deal with, you know, people, and hopefully, no parking signs and the cones will prevent that.
Where, where are the openings of the tent? Do you have a?
The openings of the tent are one facing the actual parking lot, and the smaller one, we have one larger one, which is about 10 feet, and one small one on the other side, actually facing towards the storage unit.
So you have one facing this, the store, the eight-by-40 storage, and you have one facing, I'm going to call it Route 82, this is about the short side?
Yep.
Okay. But no opening facing Clove Branch itself?
No. I mean, we, the tent obviously is an open tent. On all the areas we do not want people walking into, we normally string pennants across to prevent that, to start, to stent the flow of traffic in between.
So your tent doesn't have sides?
I'm sorry?
Your tent doesn't have sides?
They have sides, but normally they're kept down, unless it's raining.
Kept up.
They're, they're kept up when it's raining, but down, you know, we don't have the sides up all the time. When we're open for business, the sides are down.
Down as in off? Okay. Okay. It's late, it's late, it's all tight.
And Scott, you said this deli just serves morning and afternoon? It isn't open all evening?
No, this is 10 a.m. to 11 p.m.
No, the deli, because I'm thinking about the parking again.
And you also have to understand, and I'm sure there's plenty of fireworks vendors that'll tell you the same thing, most of the sales of fireworks are after 4 o'clock. And that's the truth.
Yeah, that's what I was just reconfirming.
Well, aside from the weekends, I would imagine on the weekends, it could be any other day.
Weekends are still, usually 2:30, 3 o'clock, that's when you, you'll get your amount of people. The mornings are not usually the time.
And the other thing I may have not have mentioned is that there's still a residential use there on that site.
Frown on that.
And I actually, you know, I have to agree with the last person, 83% of the sales, and that's an actual number, actually happen from the second to the fourth, right? And then it's over. I mean, we shut down on the fifth, that's it for us.
So I'd like to make a condition though that says, no, no parking on the shoulder, and I think that's a really valid concern.
That's, that
And, you know.
So let's say, let's say that
We can cone it to death, but, you know, unfortunately, stupid be as stupid does, but we'll cone as we do everywhere else.
Yeah, I know, but if you refuse to serve these people and tell them to get their car off the road?
Oh, that, you know, that would have, have no problem with me. I don't want that problem anyway, because I don't want them coming up that side anyway.
I was gonna say, with the understanding that if we find that cars are parking there, if it doesn't have the cones up?
We'll have it stopped.
Then you run the risk that the permit will be revoked.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right.
I'll second Mr. O'Brien's motion.
But I'd like to amend the conditional on that if the police department comes along and there's cars parked on the road, you're, you're done. No more.
No problem.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve this peddler's permit with cones preventing cars from parking along the shoulder of Clove Branch Road. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, the next one we have is, forgive me, Legion Fireworks at 877 Route 82 or Acme Plaza?
Hi, how are you? You said TNT, right?
I'm sorry?
In the Acme Plaza?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, my agenda says Legion Fireworks.
Yeah, I don't, that's why I was confused.
I'm just reading the agenda.
Are you saying you're not Legion Fireworks?
TNT Fireworks, which is American Promotional Events, is the Acme Plaza.
Okay.
Okay.
Were you there last year?
We were, yes.
Yeah? They were here last year.
Okay.
So I'm not exactly, that's why I was slightly confused.
All right, bear with us for one second.
That's fine.
Let's pull it.
No problem, Pam will save the day.
We can amend our agenda, let's just make sure we have the proper paperwork for you.
Yeah.
Michelle, while we're, while we're waiting on that, this is, are you proposing to be in the same location as last year?
Yes, and I do want to apologize on behalf of our company because they did not follow instructions, so we are completely, completely in the wrong. I have a whole new team, which is not an excuse, but they did not follow any of my instructions, and they put up that tent before this meeting, and they should have not done that. So that's the one thing I do wanna say. We know that that tent should have not went up, they were not instructed to put that tent up.
Okay.
And unfortunately, I'm working with a whole new team of people.
Did we have the same issue last year at this location? For some reason, I thought I remembered the tent started to go up early.
Two years ago, I know, I've been here, this is our fourth year in the same lot.
Tent is unfortunately up right now.
But I'm being completely honest with you, I mean
Well, a stop work order went out today, so it's no secret, so
Definitely does say TNT fireworks.
Not that I'm saying it's a secret, I'm just, I am putting that out there.
It's in the same spot as last year?
It's in the same spot as last year, yes, with the same individual who's operating it. It is a smaller tent this year than it was in the past, just to kind of have a little bit more of a, like a safety barrier around it, so in the past, it was like a 30 by 50 tent, and right now, it's a 20 by 40 tent. They also put it up, not in the correct, I mean, there's just several things, but they did not put it up, they put it too close to the mulch area, which doesn't allow me to have an exit, so I've already notified the tent company, one, that it had to come down, and then, two, when they do put it back up, they can't have it so close to that mulch area because then someone cannot exit out of that tent.
So it's gonna be moved tomorrow or when?
Well, I, I need to talk to them, plus I was coming here, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
It would be moved as a condition of that building permit if we issue it.
The fire inspector.
I'm sorry, Tom?
The fire inspector has to inspect the
Mm-hmm, yes.
Areas, so that the fire inspector would make them move it anyway had they not moved it.
Okay. It can't stay how, how it currently is, it's not up to our standards either.
Okay.
Just curious, I mean, do you find the previous estimates of two to three buyers an hour accurate?
I mean, he is correct when he says the second through the fourth is really like 80% of our business, really more the first through the fourth. Because 4th of July falls on Wednesday this year, it's kind of an awkward selling season for us, honestly. The weekend will be probably our busiest time, and the fourth and third will probably be a little bit slower, so the weekend time would be like that Saturday and Sunday, probably just kind of how it falls. In the weekends, I would say the sales maybe, they do start a little bit earlier than two, like he said, but maybe like, there's never like a ton of cars there, and people are, I mean, the tent's not that big, they're kinda in and out pretty quick. They buy a package and then they leave, and then, a lot of them, I mean, at least, I'm not sure exactly where he was, but like in our parking lot, a lot of our parking lots were in our grocery stores, so those people are there anyway, purchasing from like Acme or any of our Walmart locations, and they're kinda just walking over from the parking space that they're already currently sitting in.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the permit?
Just one second, I have a note here from the chief of police requesting emergency phone numbers.
You can use my number, and then I can also give you the operator's number too.
Okay, and then just a note to secure all fireworks when the stand is closed. I don't know if there was an issue with that before, but that's the note from the police.
I think that's been every year.
Sorry, the police chief.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they, they do have to, if they don't secure them, then someone
Is your application missing phone numbers?
Are they?
Is it this 256 area code number?
I would not make that your emergency contact. I can
You can give it to the clerk afterwards.
If you can, yeah, if you can just give it before you leave tonight, just so that we have it.
Okay. Because that's an office number in Alabama, and they're gonna be there until 5 o'clock, and then that's essentially it.
Okay, let's make sure then we have a
Yes.
A good number from, before you go.
I'll give you the person who's on site, which is Juanita, and then also my phone number as well.
Okay. Okay. Michael, were you making a motion or did you want?
I'm making a motion to approve the permit.
Second.
I have a motion and a second before we vote. Scott, anything we need to do with regard to the stop work order, or is just the planning board action what was required?
That was pending your approval. Pending your approval and, and issuance, you know, we have to review the plan, but
Okay. So I have a motion and a second to approve this fireworks permit, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. What is our next step?
Come to the building department with that.
First, I want you to talk to Pam and make sure she has phone numbers before you leave.
Gotcha, okay.
And then, Scott, did you say tomorrow in the building department, you'll need to go and have the stop, stop work order, you'll present your approval and have your stop work order?
And next year, no stop work orders.
Okay. Hard to find good help. Anyone else?
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a sketch plan review for Archway Plaza on Route 52.
Hi, everybody, good evening. My name is Camille, and I submitted an application for a minor site plan, application for outdoor seating for two of my tenants. It's right under their overhang storefront areas.
Okay.
And we also have a walkway in front of that, so it's kinda behind the column.
And which two tenants? I'm assuming it's the restaurants, but just
It's Carlos Pizza Express and Fresh Restaurant.
Okay.
I have my site planner all done up with placement of the chairs, tables, specs on what type of furniture that they'll be getting, sizing, pushing chairs out, two, two foot of room on, between chairs and all that.
Okay. What about the ingress and egress to the storefronts themselves? Are, we wanna make sure we're not blocking any access or?
The walkway areas, yes, that was all designed on the plan, the area for pedestrian walk. Sorry.
Okay. Michelle, did you have a chance to review that as a significant?
I did, so the only comment I had was that, I believe, one of the restaurants, there was only about four feet left for the pathway, so if you could make it five, that would be
To the door.
Yeah, to the door.
And tail moving a few chairs?
Yeah, just move, push them this way, just to give a slightly wider access to the doorway.
I'll say, how many tables are we talking in each one?
You might, it's possible you might have to get rid of one of the tables in order to do that, I'm not sure exactly, but
And that would be for the Fresh Restaurant?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we might have to do tables of two then?
Or just maybe a chair, I'm not sure exactly what kind of room you have.
We can squeeze it in and just make sure
Because I know you're drawing on it, so you, you know, you might have more room.
But in both cases, we wanna make sure we have a minimum of five feet.
Five feet to the doorway.
To the doorway. And a minimum of four feet between the column, because you have a column and then you have your tables, we wanna make sure we have, that you don't have to walk out into the parking lot, make sure you have four feet there.
Okay, so there's enough room for a mom and a child.
Yeah, in case somebody's, yeah, a stroller or a wheelchair.
Also, I did, because I'm very on top of the tenants, and the tenants are, we work very well together, obviously, we're across from a high school, so I explained to them that it would be when school is at a session, that they can put the tables and chairs out and put it away when school goes back into session, so I already have it all set up in that they take their chairs in at night, and that they monitor that the tables and chairs are not scattered, scattered all over the place, because in the end, it's a liability, so I have it all covered, just so you know.
Okay.
Yeah, I have their letters if you wanna copy, you know.
Okay. I think, have you provided that information to the planning office?
No, I, I have it all done up, because actually, they were gonna get it once upon approval.
Okay.
But I made 12 copies if you all want one.
That would be great, yeah.
Yeah, I, I made copies, because I
Make that part of the, part of our resolution will be that this will be
Okay, so I'll hand them out?
Absolutely.
So you wanna do this as a resolution or?
I think we, Michelle, this, because it's temporary and it would be only seasonal, I think this could be done as a motion, correct? Okay. So we can do that as a motion?
No, discreet for one season, and we'll revisit it, make sure everything works for next year.
Okay.
So you wanna
We can hand them down if you wanna
The one season thing, is that this is an investment for them, so is this something, because I even, you know, they are under the understanding thing.
I just need you to get back to your microphone, or we can't pick you up for our, for
I mean, they're under the understanding too that if the, you know, if it's, not that they would abuse it, but if it becomes destructive, which, the months that they're gonna have it out is the slowest times at the Plaza, I mean, it's, it's really only considered busy during a few hours during school, like from 11 to 2, the kids are just all over the place, and that's why it will not be out when the kids are, when the school is in session. So it's really very quiet at the Plaza, July and August, it's actually kinda devastating those two months, so it's something that, you know, could it be revoked if it's abused? That it doesn't have to be just the season, you know what I'm saying? That it's something that we can continue unless it's abused, unless you get a, you know, a phone call from someone saying, you know, there's a chair right by my car, and there's problems, and, you know what I mean? Just because I'm very on top of
And I'm sorry if I missed the answer, how many tables are we talking in each?
Three on each side, so it's six tables per store, so it's
Okay.
And the pizza has plenty of space, and believe it or not, the Fresh area also as well, but if we need to remove, we will for the five foot span, and that would be another thing too, if you don't see five feet, you know.
Scott, are you comfortable with just an ability to revoke the permission going forward in the event that it's not managed correctly? Okay.
And I will myself too, meaning, I, I'm, you know, I
Since this references the CAD drawing, I am gonna ask that you provide the planning office with an updated CAD, just showing that you've provided at least the five feet of space
Yes.
For ingress into both stores.
Yes.
That's important, the Americans with Disabilities Act requires that five feet of space
Just to, to
For all public access areas.
Yes.
So, any other questions from, or comments from board members? Do I have a motion to approve as a minor site plan amendment, the ability to put seasonal chairs out in front of the two restaurants at Archway Plaza, Carlos Pizza, and Fresh, Fresh Restaurant?
So moved.
Okay, and, and again, just under the condition that you have at least five feet of space access, and that those tables and chairs are managed properly and don't create any kind of public hazard, and with the ability for the building inspector, of course, to come and look, and if there's any issues
Yes, absolutely.
Take appropriate action at that point.
Absolutely, I agree 100%.
Can you even see my lips move as I made that motion?
So I have a motion as amended, please, and a second?
As amended.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, please make sure you do bring the revised CAD drawing back just too for the, for the planning.
Okay, and I just wanna give a little bit of a shout out to the chief of police for that there was a rock that came across the way from John Day, and they were there within minutes, and they found the problem, and so I just wanna give a shout out for any time we call, anything we need, I just wish it was in the budget that they could come a little bit more when the kids are in school, but I, I just make my little undercover phone calls. So I just wanna say thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Foster Road Professional Park on Route 82, also a sketch plan review.
Hi, I'm Vasmir Chandani, I'm representing the Foster Road Professionals and Dr. Sinha. There's a, there's a house that's right next to his two buildings, that at one point, they thought it would convert into some kind of a commercial property, but seeing how the practice has moved along, his office is open 365 days a year, and he has emergency care, and he has walk-ins who come in, so the feeling is that if that house could be used for somebody who manages the practice, like a caretaker for the buildings, the person could live in that house, and it's a perfect, it's just a small little house, it's 1,576 square feet, I think, the person could live there and manage the practice, and, you know, they have different, it's become a medical group now, they have cardiologists and people who do sutures and a whole much, and there's, you know, there's internists, there are pediatricians, so it's become like every, lots of different, you know, people are there now. So we were just wondering if it would be possible just to convert that, I would just renovate, we just renovate the house, and it would be the waiters, I'm not, we're not adding any square footage or anything else.
Is there still a pool at this side? The pool is still there?
The pool is still there, yes.
So, the original plan, I thought, was to demolish the house?
Yes.
Okay, so, I, I realize this was the last minute adder. Did we, do we have any paperwork on this?
Yes.
Yes.
We have the resolution, um, in the resolution, basically, it was that the house was in a life estate, if you recall. So, the woman that was living there wa, was able to stay there until she passed.
Oh, I didn't, new paperwork?
Oh.
What we're talking about here and now.
So, our original resolution had a requirement that said upon the surrender or termination of the life estate, the future use of the house and pool area will be subject to review by the planning board. No residential use will be allowed after the life estate. So, the applicant is now saying instead of raising the house or converting it to offices, they're coming back and asking for a change.
What I'm really asking though is, is what, and I, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cast, you know, but I'm saying is, has this all been specked out anywhere? Or we just, this is verbal?
No, I had, I had given some paperwork, right?
There's a new application.
Yeah.
And the other thing I just want to add, I know we're talking about residential use, but our code does permit a caretaker on commercial property. So, I mean, it would have to be definite that, that it's not just for rent to the general public.
No, no, it won't, it would be, it would be a caretaker who would...
I mean, our zoning does, does allow for that.
And the house is located, it is a B1 zone, just so everybody knows.
Up to 50%.
So, it's a, so it's an ancillary use as opposed to a primary use because it's in the B1?
Correct.
So, is the pool going to stay?
I think, Dr. Sinha felt he could just leave it. I mean, that's, that was what he felt.
Okay.
But if...
So, the pool stays and the house stays now and it comes to...
Just the waiters, yeah. I, we just renovated a little bit, you know, changed the roof and, you know, painted and just things like that.
So, Michelle, so Michelle, our original site plan required that the house be removed and then that a proposed new plan would be brought before us. With a change request like this, is it considered minor? Or is it considered something that needs a full application and to go through an amended site plan? Because it's a change of use.
Well, I think there's, and I'm, I'm going to refer to Tom here. I think there's two actions. I think one action is you have to get rid of, you have to agree to get rid of whatever note you originally put on the plan or in the resolution. And then the other would be that in order to get a apartment there, because it's, it is actually, the house is located in a B1 zone, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. And I'm, and Tom's here now, it's a, it's a special permit.
What has to be 1,800 square foot or less, which this would be.
It's a...
And it has to be on a parcel of the owner.
Parcel of the owner, 1,800 square feet or less. These are the per, special permit requirement.
I thought you said 800, it's 1,800?
1,800, yeah.
Eighteen hundred.
Or be occupied by an agent and the owner, dysfunction in whole or partial be out of a custodial nature.
Maintenance, yeah.
Yep. So, but it's a, it's still a special permit.
I was going to say, is that a permit?
So, it requires advertising and it requires a public hearing?
Correct.
Okay, all right. In general, I don't have any objection to that use, but, um, it does, it is going to require an application before the board and the request for the special permit.
But just, let me ask, this is a question for Tom. In order to remove the restriction, do they just, can they do that by motion to remove?
Yeah, well, that would all be part of the public hearing and if you grant the permit, you take off the restriction. It makes the cleanest sense to do it that way.
I, what, can you, you, you alluded to some upgrades to the house or changes?
It's just, it just, you know, it, it has, I think the house is about maybe 30, 40 years old and nothing was ever done to it.
Okay.
So, it was just in a state of disri, dis, disrepair. So, it has to be brought up to code.
Just maintenance up.
Just maintenance. We would bring proper elec, you know, electricity. There's not enough of anything, so we figured, you know, the lady lived there by herself. So, they ne, never did anything with it. So, I thought we would just fix it up, that's all, is, instead of...
I'm good.
Demolishing it and, you know, filling a landfill. I think this is a kind of, seems more reasonable. I don't know. That's what it seems to me.
Okay, so what you'll do is you'll, um, provide a full application to the board with the request for the special permit to be able to have the ancillary residential use on your site.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a discussion for Hartshorn Two, a two-lot subdivision on Route 52.
I do have a flash out. If you want to try and... Good evening. My name is Jamie La Judas from Inside Engineering, serving in landscape architecture. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, uh, who is also present, Mrs. Kathy Hartshorn, for the property located at 3875 Route 52. Um, the, the project before you is a two-lot subdivision. Um, the, the project has been before you several times, I believe, um, if the board remembers. There was various different, uh, layouts before you, but in this scenario, we have, um, a proposed residence in the back on Lot 2, which is essentially this parcel here. And then Lot 1, which currently has an existing residence on site. Um, the property has two districts, um, on it, shown in this orange line here. Um, the B1 in the front along 52 and then the R3 in the back. Uh, the property is currently 7.8 acres. We would be subdividing, um, the front portion of the property, the, uh, existing residence to just shy of one acre and then the remaining for Lot 2. Um, so tonight, we're here to basically get a feel for the board, um, as far as the project. We did submit previously and had discussions with, um, the village planner and the, the, I'm sorry, the town planner and the town attorney regarding certain concerns over the need for variances and, and whatnot. And I believe we addressed that in our cover letter to you, about, uh, not needing variances because of not having any restrictions on the B1 zone.
So, Michelle, do you want to address that as far as...
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, because I was half distracted, but, um, so that, the house, as you can see, the existing house is located, um, in the B1. They have to access the, um, parcel to the back, which is Zone R3 via the B1 zone. So, the front portion of the driveway will go through the B1 and then back. And then it's essentially, it's also, I guess it's technically like a flag lot a little bit. And then, um, the house itself has, um, I think it's 850 square feet, the garage?
Roughly, yes.
Yeah, so that, so it's got a large garage, which originally had been, um, located in front of the front line of the home, so they've now connected with a, of a breezeway. Um, because it was a large garage and you're, you're technically not allowed to have the garage, detached garage in, in front of the front line of the house. So, that's why you see that design. And essentially, they're asking to subdivide off the R3 portion with a small portion of the B1 in the front where the, the access drive goes through into its own separate residential lot.
And I'm sorry, dumb question. It's, is, because all this, all of, at least the materials I saw, I apologize, we're all referring to the back part. So, when you say the house, that refers to the box that's in the middle, right?
Correct.
What is the other thing that's the, is that a...
That's not part of this.
Building.
It's not part of this, but right now, that's vacant, right?
I believe it's vacant, right?
I believe it was purchased. I don't believe anyone has moved into it currently.
It's not owned by the applicant.
It is not owned by the...
I real, okay, so it has nothing to do with this and that it's not considered in any part of the acre stuff? Okay.
Correct.
So, hereafter, the house refers to...
Proposed residence would be in the back, yes.
Uh, it should be noted also that the, the site does have wetlands along the side here. Um, and that is the reasoning why we have the house, uh, located where it is, because we do have septic area proposed, um, outside of the buffer area, uh, here. And then also the driveway, we're trying to skirt across, um, as close to this existing building and then our proposed property line to basically cordon this parcel off, um, because of this wetland area and to stay out of the buffer as much as possible.
Is it Jamie or Janie?
Jamie.
The, the pink line on the map is the wetlands?
That is the wetland buffer, yes. The green is the, um, the wetlands themselves. Uh, blue is this building setback and the orange would be the zone line.
And this is a, will be a business, as I understand? I mean, there's like multiple...
No.
No commercial vehicles?
No commercial vehicles whatsoever. The applicant will be living there herself.
Okay. Okay.
Absolutely no commercial vehicles.
Thank you.
Well, I think when we met too, we discussed, so first of all, residential use in that area is an R3 zone.
Correct.
So, this would be a, a one acre, so that was it. But the town board is, is going to consider and, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, the, the one acre applies to the B1.
Correct, but I mean...
So, the other lot is 6.8.
But it's a residential use in the B1.
But you still have a residential use though.
Yeah, but, so what we did talk about was the town board, this comes up quite often, as you're very well aware of. Sometimes it's the business use, sometimes the residential use. So, the town board has actually set a public hearing for their August meeting to, uh, consider adopting a special permit to give the, a little more flexibility on these split zone lots, uh, because we have now identified like four or five that are in some process either before you, the zoning board or building department. And that would probably solve the issue here with, because I think no one has a, a problem with it, except the issue is the residential use is non-conforming in the business zone. By cutting it down to the one acre, um, you're splitting, you're splitting the non-conforming lot, if you will.
I, I hope, I just want to clarify, if I, if I may. Uh, the B1 zone does not have any restriction on the size of the lot.
Right, for business, but doesn't allow a residential use as, in the...
Being that it's a pre-existing non-conforming, I believe in our, in our meeting, we determined the use was not changing and therefore your variances...
You have one, three acres now for that non-conforming use, so you are in compliance in that regard to your area.
But being that in the B1 zone, there is no restriction for lot size, how is there a lots?
It brings you back to your use, though. You're using it as a residence. You may use that for a residence as ever, so you're kind of skirting the R3 requirement because right now, it's more than three acres. You're creating a non-conforming by reducing that non-conforming use to an acre from three acres. That's, that's where the difference is. If you can shape that, that you still maintain your three acres and, and you want to continue that residential use, I think you're fine.
Or if you just wait until the special permit, if it's adopted, that solves the problem.
May solve the problem, so, yeah.
Okay.
How old is that house?
Forgive me, that was just not our understanding.
How far back does this go?
Old.
It's extremely old. I don't have an exact date, I'm sorry.
Kathy, do you know the date?
Old.
I don't know.
Before 78, older than me.
Before me. It's over, it's over 49 years old. There you go.
So, Michelle and Tom, it seems like we have the ability to keep this as a conforming lot if the August...
Well, come August, it will take away the issue that Scott raises about the acreage. And if not, if you want to pursue it sooner, you would have to, I think, Scott's feeling is you got to bring up the acreage in the front lot. So, I mean, August is 60 days away, so.
Yeah, it's, my, my confusion is just that's not how we left it from our meeting.
Yeah, well, I know, and internally, we've been, you know, everybody has different opinions, so we're trying to balance it out so that the boards have something consistent, so.
How far back would that line have to go?
Well, uh, one acre is shown right there, so we'd essentially have to come way back here.
Into the septic of...
Oh, yep, losing the septic.
Are you reviewing that permit?
Or you would have to include part of the wetlands. You'd have to draw the line differently.
Yeah, I was going to say, couldn't you just take some of that?
The driveways right there. That's the access to the back lot. You can't, because, as I understand, there's a provision in your code that does not allow you to access residential uses through a business.
True, true, B1, right.
Does that also go away with the...
Yeah, well, and also with the special permit, which might be helpful to you, is that if you can prove you can have a separate driveway, we have a shared driveway, uh, permit that would allow the board to allow you to share the driveway with the other house. So that, you know, you've laid out that you can have a driveway independent, uh, which is fine. That's the first level of, then the special permit would allow you to share the driveway so that you wouldn't have to construct that other driveway unless there was a problem in the future.
So, that provision would go away essentially?
Yeah, that's, they are now, and then the special permit's going to give you great... So, that's really a savings that you wouldn't, if, you know, that's doing...
Less construction, less disturbance?
Yeah, less construction disturbance, but you do physically show that you could do it, which is a requirement of the shared driveway permit.
Okay.
So, I think it, you know, would clean up a lot of things, make it simpler for everybody and maybe save you some money.
Yeah. Well, we're all for that. Sounds good.
I'm sure you would.
So, at this time, we would advance an application and anticipation?
Well, I mean, I think as long as the board conceptually doesn't seem to have any major issue with that layout unless there's anything else. So, come back in August, hopefully the town board will be favorable to the amendment.
So, are...
And if they are, you could, you know, progress it in September.
Do we know when the town board's...
Uh, it's, oh, I knew you were going to ask that. It's August, uh, it's late in August.
We'll refer the zoning to you guys for the July meeting. I'll make sure that it's on your agenda for July, okay?
Okay.
It's, uh, I, unfortunately, I think it's the 30th, but that could be moved up to the 23rd, yeah. Wait, what's the 4th? No, it isn't. It is the 23rd, I'm sorry, yeah.
It's the 23rd, so our meeting in August, it was on the 21st, which, so it would, it looks like it would be the September 18th meeting.
You could set it for your September 18th meeting, yeah.
So, if we had you back in for discussion on September 18th, I know it's about 90 days from now, but that town law...
Well, you could, theoretically, you could set them for a public hearing. Um, and obviously, if the town board adopts the special permit, they're good to go. If they don't, then you might have to change things around, but at least that way, they would...
And you would just, at, at that point, also have the ability to provide the alternate plan showing a shared driveway if we chose?
Right. Okay, so we'll move forward with, um, and an ac, an actual application with grading and the whole nine and with an anticipation?
Do we have everything we need to be able to circulate for a public hearing right now? Or, I, because I know this is our, I think this is our first discussion with this iteration, right?
Well, I think, uh, everything with this out anyway. Well, I mean, I think if you set the date, as long as the application's filed timely, 25 days before or whatever, the advertising...
So, maybe what we do is we ask the applicant to stop back in August and just make sure everything's in order, so then we would set you for public hearing for September 18. Is that enough days, Pam, August 21st to September 18th? It should be, right? Okay.
See you in the fall.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Let's see, who does that leave?
Can't imagine.
Hold on.
Thank you.
You too. Okay, the next item on our agenda is also a discussion for Gasland East Fishkill Site Plan on Route 82.
While we're setting up, uh, can I, Tom?
17 minutes, I'm sorry.
What is the status of the, the Floris lawsuit?
Uh, it's, uh, fully submitted. We're waiting for the judge's decision.
Okay, so do we have any idea when that will be?
Only if you have a crystal ball.
Okay.
Uh, I shouldn't say that, but the court system, it was fully submitted. This is, I think about, say, um, in May, early May. And the rule of the court is that they're supposed to render a decision in 60 days, but the actual reality is it's usually 90 to, 90 days to six months.
Thank you.
So, we are possibly zero to six months away from...
For the next two months, yeah.
As I say, I don't have a crystal ball, but I have a good attorney, so.
Oh, I thought we lost the engineer.
That's perfect, thank you. Good evening, I'm Christopher Lapin with the Chasing Companies, representing the applicant, Gaslight Petroleum, this evening. We were before the board in March to discuss the application before you, which is the redevelopment of the former gas station located on a one point three-three acre site here at the, in the vicinity of Route eighty-two and Taconic State Parkway. As discussed, the former building is an existing thirty-six hundred square foot auto body shop and former fueling facility. The site as it is has existing onsite contamination that's required to be remediated. The development of this property is, is being conducted under the existing special use permit that you've alluded to earlier, that's currently being challenged. We were before you, and some of the comments that we had received back in March related to the site plan focused around relocating the onsite refuse enclosure, the ability to integrate some additional parking on the property, submissions of wetland delineation report and threatened endangered species report, which we've done, further dialogue with the DOT related to access to the site and its ability to permit left turns in and out of the property, as we, our initial plan showed right turn in, right turn out only, and also to, we were asked if we can conduct a meeting with the DEC to visit the site and enter an opinion as to whether or not there are wetlands on the site. So, that's kind of the overview of the items we were asked to address back in March when we were before you. So, just to kind of walk through what we've done, our last plan that we brought in here had eight parking spaces, there was a desire to add three more, some of the discussions we had was to add them in over here on the east side of the property. We were able to accommodate those additional three spaces, and we slightly shifted the wall out to allow those three spaces that was desired. We now have eleven spaces total on the, on the property. If you recall, we also.
Does that include your filling?
Not, not including the filling, with the filling, that would be a total of seventeen.
Okay.
That's, that's a great point. We had the refuse enclosure area located to the west of the building, there was a concern brought up by the town planner about it conflicting with a refuse truck coming in and people potentially being at the pump and the close proximity of the refuse enclosure to the building. We revisited this and did some slight reorientation here, and let me take a step back, the other concern was the width of the refuse area. We had come before you with a refuse area that was in a neighborhood of eight foot wide, something we've done on other sites. There was concern about the frequency of pickup associated with that. So, we've now shifted the refuse area to the east of the building, four spaces away. We have it all enclosed in a masonry block that matches the building, we've increased it to twelve foot in width from the eight foot that we had previously presented to the board, and we believe this allows for the uninterrupted loading and unloading of the refuse enclosure by a truck, and that it would not impact any use of the pumps along the front of the property. We met with the DEC on the site, Kelly McKean, she validated the wetland report that was submitted by Ecological Solutions, that there were no wetlands on, on the property. She also agreed with Ecological's assessment that the bank as defined on the property is along the vicinity of what we're showing here, and therefore, there would be no fifty foot setback associated with that.
Excuse me, Chris, I, I know that DOT has granted you guys a left turn in. Is there any change planned on the western egress? I mean, I would assume that you're discouraging people from turning left out of the western thing by making that, you know, basically a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty degree turn, right?
Correct.
So, there's no plan then to kind of readjust that? That is what you're gonna do, to discourage people from taking a left out of there?
Yeah, the intent going here is signage, is no left turn out, left turn prohibited here, DOT wants the left turns to be routed to the eastern portion of the accessway. And one of their comments, which I included in, in the recent March letter, was to modify the striping at this location, because we, we had it, on our plan that we have shown, the striping extends a little bit further into this access, in this location, so their preference is to shave the, the striping further to the east to allow left turns to come out here.
What about the left turns in, where?
So, there is a, a queue lane that we have shown on our plan here, which allows for a left turn to come into the site, we have stacking for up to three cars, that's being provided.
So, I, I must have read the memo wrong, I thought the full egress was gonna be the western entrance.
Eastern entrance.
That's what I would have thought, but then I thought I read it was the western. So, when a person turns in a left, they have to circulate all the way through the site and come back to that point?
Come back out. Correct.
So it's kind of like they gotta drive against the grain to get back out?
Correct.
Whereas if you made the left coming out the western side, you're, it seems like it's a more fluid motion within the site.
Other point.
Well, and you don't have cars trying to go left out and left in at the same time.
There, uh.
Do you have a copy of that memo?
Yeah, I might have it on my. I think I have the letter that I submitted to the town, which outlines what he said.
I'm sure you got the latest and greatest, because it's different.
There were, yeah, there was a modification to what Phil had, Phil Greeley had had. Yes, you're correct, on his modification, he corrected Phil from easterly to westerly.
So it is the western?
It's the westerly for the left turn, I'm sorry, I stand corrected.
Okay. But I mean, to me, that makes more sense, in that, in improving your onsite circulation.
So the left turn in happens at the eastern entrance, left turn out happens at the western?
Western entrance, correct.
What's that?
What I put in my letter to the town is accurate, the left turn is coming out of the western entrance, and the left turn is coming in the eastern entrance.
And that will stay like a hundred and thirty degree arc, then?
You're gonna change this geometry?
This, this geometry's getting slightly modified, we got this, we got the DOT's geometry after this was submitted, they gave us their verbal as to what they're allowing here.
So they're straightening it up?
Yeah, so.
So it is getting straightened out?
This is getting modified, yeah, we just didn't get the geometry till afterwards.
Okay.
I apologize, I was speaking on.
You're fine.
There were some initial discussions with the DOT and Phil Greeley with Mazur, who's the traffic consultant, who had the left turn come out easterly, and I forgot to update that in my head.
So if now that's the preferred solution, I mean, I don't want to be difficult, but I mean, won't people be making a left into the left turn lane as they come out? I mean, or do you expect them to make, you know, cross two lanes and go into the third lane?
Here's where, maybe I could, so if you, this might be a little bit clearer to look at in terms of the plan here, if you're coming out and taking a left turn here, this is still a single lane at this location, so you're, you're going to, unless you start tapering in to take a left turn like you just did, you're gonna continue through on the eastbound lane.
Okay, so the turn lane does not start.
So here's the turn lane right here.
Okay, so it does not start, the road does not start to widen till you are past.
Right past the, correct.
The western exit entrance.
Access point, correct.
So the western exit, is it gonna be two lanes, right and left, coming out of the site? And you're gonna have that posted, do not enter, right?
It's gonna be a do not, it's gonna be a do not enter, whether I have, I mean, it's going to, right, we have it at twenty-four foot in width.
Seems like you should have two lanes, so that you don't queue up on the site people trying to make that left coming out.
We, we can stripe that as two lanes, it's twenty-four foot in width.
Well, you can do it striped, but you gotta stripe it and arrow it, and sign it as well, because you want to make sure you don't have any confusion leaving the site.
Correct. We can do it as two lanes, I was gonna say, is because we need a twenty-four foot width in order to get the trucks out of the facility.
Well, trucks are trucks, but, but now the eastern will just be a single lane going in.
Will be a single lane coming in.
So you can buy back some of that space by narrowing your entrance and expanding your.
Yeah, we, we don't have much.
Other than making sure your trucks can get in.
That's, that's what's dictating that width there. And that's what we had included in our plans for the truck maneuvering.
And where's the truck stopping for refueling on the site?
Right here.
Okay.
And then, obviously, there's the fuel tanks at this location here.
Okay. And what about loading, loading zone for the store?
I'm sorry?
What about loading zone for the store?
Loading zone for the store can occur in the same location here as well.
Is that practical?
It's, I mean, it's, at a number of other stations we've done, we have it out in the front as well, we're, we're doing one right.
Is that really where they stop, or do they tend to block parking spots?
You can sign it for loading, but I'll be honest, I've seen loading areas I've designated at sites like Dunkin' Donuts, fifty percent of the time parks in the location that's designated, the other fifty percent, they don't.
They don't get tractor trailers, Dunkin' Donuts.
Not all of them, but.
And, and this one is strictly the convenience, right? We, there was no cooking on site?
There's no cooking, they were going to have cold sandwiches.
Okay.
And turkey, no, no fryer or anything of that nature.
No fryer?
No second count.
And no, no hot, no stove, no?
They would have the.
Hot breakfast.
They would have a hot breakfast, bacon, egg and cheese, or sausage, egg and cheese.
But they're making them, or they're delivering them to the site?
They're being made there, griddle.
Okay.
But they don't have a deep fryer for like fries or chicken or.
Quite honestly, you know, like, you take Floris down on fifty-two, you got all that stuff going on, and parking is a problem down there, and by the time you make your deliveries of the fuel, it's, it's a problem, so I don't know that we wanna, you gotta watch what you go inside this store, that we don't repeat that, candidly.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with the Floris issues.
What's Lake Drive?
Lake Drive. Well, that's not what I'm hearing, no.
You're doing breakfast?
Yeah.
But you got a grill, you got employees, you got, you know. See, if you go into Stewart's, you can get a hot sandwich, it's in a rotating thing, and they keep it warm, and there's no employees, there's no grill, it's just sold at your regular counter, okay? What you have at, down on fifty-two is a separate counter, they're taking orders, and you're making stuff custom, so it's a different animal then, so you can still have your hot sandwiches, but do you have a grill, you don't have a grill? And those employees that go with the grill?
They're, they're made on a, a plug-in flat top, though.
You still have staff, you still have parking, and then we gotta take a hard look at that parking.
Yeah, I, I thought part of the reason why we.
I go in there at fifty-two many times, and I leave because I can't find a parking space. And the dome's not even built yet over there, so I mean.
The parking requirements, I think we went through this last time, states, one space based on two hundred and fifty square foot of convenience or area.
And there's employee counts as well, though?
There wasn't, there is no employee counts in the town code for parking. The reason we added the three additional spaces was for the employees.
Okay.
It was what, part of our conversation was last time we were here.
Do you have a floor plan?
Yes, that was submitted as well.
But the, the floor plan hasn't changed.
The floor plan is, did not change from the March twenty ninth, no. It's on there as well, if you want to.
All right, so that's something we can review, bring it up, but, I mean, we have.
I, I can bring it up.
Okay.
So, we can get a breakfast sandwich, now can I get a hash brown and a small coffee tea?
I never have a problem parking at Blue Hill.
Yeah, because there is no customs, so it's not a free gas station.
That's great, it, it works. Chris, while you're doing that, did, did I see that right, that the delivery truck is partially blocking the egress? Did I read that right, no, it's not the case? Okay, not partially blocking. Okay, because obviously, you'd have to make some kind of adjustments, so you don't do that if it weren't the case.
Michelle, while we're, while we're waiting, the, the comments Chris made about the DEC review, have you seen that information, are you comfortable with it?
I haven't seen it, yes.
So has it been submitted to us, and you haven't had a chance to review it, or?
You haven't submitted any of the DEC stuff to us, because that happened after the last meeting.
No, we submitted the wetland report, we submitted the ecological report, and Kelly.
We haven't seen that?
Have you seen it?
A wetland report and a, what was it?
Kelly.
Chris, we need you speaking into a microphone.
But, but have you seen this?
Folks back home are.
Did, have you seen the stuff from Kelly?
Mm-hmm. I'm sorry, Chris, just say one more time what was submitted, because I don't know.
We submitted the ecological report, the wetland report.
All we got, all I saw was a traffic study.
The traffic study came in in May, but we had our prior submitted from March twenty-ninth, that we didn't get on the next agenda, because the DOT had an opine on the access.
That was the plastic covered thing, right?
Yes.
I don't think I saw that one.
I'm sorry.
She's got it.
So, we've, this is a copy of the floor plan that we submitted, which identifies the cooler area, the location of the utilities in the background, restroom facilities on the northwest corner, the checkout counter here for, for the gas, coffee, whatever else, and then we have the, the other checkout with the small sink is where he planned on making.
I'm sorry, do you just, do you have your pointer? I'm.
Yeah, I think I left it over there.
Sorry.
Here are the coolers.
Yep.
Along the northern section of the, here are the utilities, restrooms over here, this is the display for chips, cookies, coffee as you walk in, and then to the, here's the checkout counter, and then here's where they would make small sandwiches.
Okay, so you're showing a sink, but no actual stove top or anything?
Correct.
Because they're intending to use something that plugs in?
It's just a plug-in.
Okay. So Michelle, you, you need to review the.
I'll review all the D O Ts.
Reports that have been submitted.
So, so they basically are not, is this, is this class C T stream?
Yes.
Okay, so they're not gonna require any sort of fifty-foot buffer, so you can move, the parking is fine, located in the refuse container, go into that area that we were concerned about.
The, and the buffers only if they can't define the bank, which they can certainly define the bank.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want me to bring the site plan back up?
Sure. So, so Chris, the one thing I think, I'm sorry, I don't mean to make you, the one thing I think we haven't seen yet is if you have a map that actually shows what the DOT has told you to do for the ingress and egress, right? So.
I mean, I brought a copy of what they, a PDF they sent me after this middle, so I'll bring that up on the screen.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right.
No wonder our ratings are so low. This is really bad television, you know?
It's, in terms of the roadwork within the Route 52 corridor, it's, it's similar in nature to what we're showing on our plan. There's just some modification to the striping on the eastern portion of Route 52 and just stating that the shoulders need to be replaced with full-depth pavement. I'm sorry, Route 82.
All right. So you need to revise this to show the actual ingress and egress that you're going to have at the site. You're going to revise it to show the work that's required on 52, sorry, 52, 82. Is there anything else, Michelle, that we're waiting on before we could set this for a public hearing?
I think you, you had asked for
Lead Agency. So, I mean, and, and at this point
They could probably circulate.
You wanted the DOT's opinion
Essentially what the plan is, right?
Before you could circulate is what you asked for, so that's why
Yeah, because we didn't know what, we, we were waiting because we didn't know what DEC was going to say about the buffer and potentially moving in. So we didn't know what ha, what kind of space we were going to have and if we had to shrink the building for the parking or whatever.
Okay. Now we have that answer. So I think we have that information, so
You can declare your intent to be lead agency.
And then we have, what, a 30-day circulation period before we can All right. So do I, do I have a
A motion that we declare ourselves lead agents?
I'd second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So please work with Michelle in the planning office to get your circulation out. And then I think Michelle, do, Michelle, other than the revised drawing showing the ingress and egress as it's going to be presented, do we need anything else before we could set the public hearing or do we need to?
No, but I know there was, there was a condition that the DOT talked about the roadway signage, the location of the sign.
They're like
So, yeah, so make sure you show where
Correct.
Where it is correctly on the new plan.
I think the revised plan would do it then.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the other thing is I think you need a floodplain development permit as part of this too, right? So we got to just make sure
When we advertise, we got to advertise for that too. Floodplain development permit is required too for this.
You've done a preliminary review, but we're going to have to finalize that.
Do we need that information before we can schedule the public hearing or circulate for lead agency? Or can we do that concurrently?
It'd be concurrent.
Do you want a copy of the architectural elevation as well? I know
Have you been to the ARB yet?
We have not. We, we didn't start with the ARB yet because we at least wanted it circulated. But would you want a copy of that for the circulation? Because I know we always get a call from the county asking for it.
I would appreciate that. That would be good. And then you should also schedule yourself to appear before the ARB.
We're going to do that. We just wanted to make sure we were okay with the building.
I think knowing that the, the, we don't have an issue with the wetland setback, I think we're okay.
Just a quick question. How many fueling stations are on 52 at John Jay? How many fueling stations do you have down on 52?
Six, I think.
Six? The same? Okay.
Six or eight?
I just want to know how many, but it's the same. Six. Okay.
So Michelle, with, with the need to do the circulation, today's the 19th already. I know there's holidays coming. I'm thinking we set this for August.
What's the meeting date in August?
August 21st. I think, I, I just don't think you'll make July 17th for, to do the circulation and the advertising and get the plans revised, so
No, we won't, we won't make the 30 days.
Right. Right. That's what I mean. So are you comfortable you can make August 21st? That gives you about three weeks to get everything done?
You'll have it.
Okay. Do I have a motion to, unless you have other questions for us?
No, I, I think you've answered all my questions this evening.
Okay.
Motion to schedule for August 21st?
Second.
I'm assuming when you say schedule, you want to schedule a public hearing for Gaslandes Fish Gill.
For Gaslandes Fish Gill, I, you know
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So please make sure you get your circulation done and your advertising for both the special permit and for your public hearing for the August 21st date.
Will do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since Mike is in motion mode, I should do the next one. No, you know what? I've done enough and I've given enough of Laurie's go. Somebody else man up.
Really? I don't believe I've said anything. All right. That was the last item on our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Do we, Laurie, before we do
Motion? Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I did. I said I would call for Hudson Valley Gyro and Market, but I don't, we don't have anybody else here, right? Okay. Thank you very much, Steve. And now do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Have a